October 7, 28, 29 a.m. We would like to move into our line item number two. This is an invitation in place of allegiance by Councilman John Rigs, who was absent, so we'll ask Councilman Duke to do it instead.
How would you do? Our most gracious heavenly Father, we thank thee for the grace and mercy you show upon our great land, nation, and this community. We ask your guidance as we make effort together to do and rule the people in this community in what might be created unto you. You give us our sins and the blessings of Jesus' name and prayer.
Amen.
The Lord is the God of the United States of America and through your love and for his saints, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will down to agenda item number three, which is recognition of public presentations. We have recognition sitting up for E's. Jason, if you will.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor, Council. Jason Bulls, Director of Poluverse Engineering. On Mondays, September 24th, sanitation employees, Randy Davis and David Lundie, were working their routine residential collection route to stop to gather polycard at a disabled person's residence. When they approached the home to move the car curbside, they heard someone inside the home calling for help. Upon investigation, the distress call, they discovered that the disabled resident had fallen and was unable to get up, so they immediately called 911 for assistance. EMS was responding quickly to the situation to assist the resident, and you can only imagine how long the resident would have been on the ground in the home, unattended, had they not been in the right place in the right time to help this person accordingly. This is just testament to some of the things that we practice and we preach, if you will, with some of our employees. I'm going to stand for our sanitation superintendent, who does a really good job working with our employees, reminding them if they see something, say something. Our sanitation employees are along with our other employees, they're always going through neighborhoods, they see things on a consistent basis, weekend, week out, they can tell when something's not right, and they're able to be there to help public safety and to better serve the public and citizens of Statesboro. So today, in recognition of their active service by assisting a citizen in need and avoiding a potentially serious incident, we would like to recognize Randy Davis and David Lundie.
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to add, none of you have ever had a relative or loved one lying on the floor, calling them alone? It is incredibly dangerous because my uncle was, and it rained there overnight, and they almost couldn't see. That's how detrimental it could be. So thank you so much for what you did.
I'm not sure, no, I've had the fact that I've known Mr. David Lundie for a long time, from my first reading back to the act of where he did was not so far, especially that's the character he has.
Good, see, we're good people. All right, we'll move on down to agenda item four, and soon we have anyone signing up for public comments. Okay. We'll move down to agenda item five, which is consideration of motion to approve the consent agenda approved for minutes for 2018's council in that session to minutes. Is there a motion to approve?
Sure, Mr.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor? All right, let's show that agenda item five has passed. I would move down to agenda item six, which is the second leading consideration of a motion to approve ordinance 2018-12, an ordinance amending Article 31, solar installation and operations of any solar systems within the city of Statesboro. Frank?
Yes, sir, Mayor, thank you. As you recall, the last meeting, we had the first reading, and City Planner One, Justin Williams, gave a brief presentation of the solar ordinance, and we would just ask at this time for you to formally knock that ordinance and separate it.
Is there any discussion by council on the varsus solar ordinance? Now, seeing that there is no discussion, is there a motion to approve?
Sure, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, let's show that the solar installation operation ordinance has passed.
Was that a fist poke we got back there?
Good job, Justin. Agenda item seven, which is the public hearing regarding the closure of West Cherry Street from Martin Luther King Jr. Drive to South College Street. Is there a motion to open the policy?
Sure.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, Jason?
Yes, sir. The West District development on South College Street has requested that the city abandon the segment of West Cherry Street from South College Street to Martin Luther King Jr. Drive. In addition to currently developing the property to the south of West Cherry Street right now, the owners of the development have recently acquired the property to the north of West Cherry Street and are seeking to utilize the current right-of-way as a common area to the improvements. The only potential impact of this request will be to the Open Hearts Community Mission on Martin Luther King Jr. Drive, which is adjacent to this development. The developers have contacted the mission regarding this proposal and have received an endorsement from them for this, and have included copies of these in the council package. They have approved, the developers have agreed to allow the mission, both pedestrians and vehicles from the public to traverse the property from South College Street to Martin Luther King Jr. Drive in the same manner they do now. Poluverse Engineering staff evaluated this request and consulted with the city attorney for guidance. Staff found that the street sees minimal daily vehicle and pedestrian traffic due to the presence of West Main Street to the north and Bullock Street to the south, due to which that provides a more natural and convenient connection between South College Street and Martin Luther King Jr. Drive. In addition, this road is in disrepair and in need of resurfacing maintenance. The city attorney has advised that Georgia case law provides the mayor and council with broad discretion in determining what is in the public interest and consideration of abandonment. And what you have before you here today is just a public hearing, your input on this proposal.
Does there anyone here to speak for this action? Is there anyone to speak against? Is there anyone to speak here for or against? All right, is there a motion to close the hearing?
Sure.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Right, council, any discussion?
I like the fact that it is part of District Two, and the fact that the Open Hearts have been involved with, and the fact that they will continue to allow pedestrians and vehicles to utilize the West Cherry, it's a good thing. So I would think it's a good thing that they improve it, take the cost off the city and open development.
Is there anyone else? Okay. All right, is there a motion to vote?
Sure.
Public hearing regarding the closure? Is that?
Public hearing.
Just a public hearing? Okay. No matter what says, ask council to vote. No problem. All right, we'll move on down to section number eight, public hearing, consideration of a motion to approve application for alcohol license, section 6.5, VIP Store Incorporated. Okay? Is there a motion to open it?
Sure.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, and plans on it?
No issues.
Where's Chief Prong in there?
There you go.
Any issues?
No, sir.
Is Chief Prong in here?
No.
He doesn't have heard anything?
No.
Okay. All right, can?
No issues.
All right, is there anyone to speak for or against? Okay. All right, is there a motion to close?
Sure.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, is there a motion to approve?
Sure.
Is there a second?
I have a question before you.
Okay.
Is the VIP, the management or owner representative here?
No. If there's a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay. All right. Okay. Let's show that agenda item eight has passed. Agenda item nine, consideration of motion to approve application for section 6-17, exempting exemptions to open container prohibition, item eight, for Eagle Creek Brewing Company. Is there a motion to open, is there a consideration of motion to approve, pending that there's no issues as far as planning, fire, police, city automatic?
No issue.
No issues?
No issues.
No. Okay. All right, is there a motion to approve?
Sure.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, number nine has a, oh yeah, that's what I'm about to do now. Number nine has a B for another date, which is October 13th. Is there any issue as far as the October issue date?
None.
All right, seeing that there is none, is there a motion to approve?
Sure.
Second. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to agenda item 10, consideration of a motion to approve application, RZ 18-07-02, Glenwood South requires a zoning limit of 19.2 acres from a 54.12 acre property lot on the SNS Railroad Bed Road from R1, R10 to R8, St. Family West Street to the PUD, zoning district in order to develop a multifamily residential subdivision. Is there, is there any discussion by council?
Mr. Mayor, that is my district, District Five, and this is the fourth time, I believe, we've heard this three times in the public, once now before us, and I want to make some comments about this consideration, particularly in light of the risk of publicity and all the concern that's been expressed to us. I want to make sure that everyone understands that these property owners came in for property as R8, R10, they will develop, they own the property, their intent is to develop, and here at council, we had two choices, to accept this application for the planned unit development or to approve the other development that are R8, R10. I've set on county, tiny and zoning for a number of years, almost nine, and I can tell you that the decision to make, a decision more than others rests on all your comments and yet our consideration of what actually has been presented to us. And I want to make sure that the public understood that the greenway, its preservation and protection is something, and improvement, is something we take very seriously. I've been blessed to travel some of what I've seen cities with, in Europe, with fabulous designs. We're here in Statesboro with our trails, our parks, and the Greenway doing a good job. How do we do that? Well, in response to this, we have gotten what everyone has asked us for, city and county approval, because although the city owns the land, the county controls that greenway, as they do all the parks in the city. So, as of Friday, we held the first meeting of the combined joint task force to preserve and protect the greenway and improvement. That was attended by city and county officials. Now, as part of that, they will perform in the future with citizen members advising that council both on the development side and the greenway reservation side, so that we have a balance as we look at this. The greenway is currently being considered for extension in Brooklyn along the same SNS Railroad Bed Road. It has been made mention that there was not a traffic study. That is incorrect. There has been a traffic study, and I want to call in Frank Neal for a minute, and Frank, use your staff as necessary to discuss that briefly, and would the date and the fact that the study is just its own, can you repeat for us?
Yes, sir. Actually, if you don't mind, I'm going to bring Jason up, he's probably a little more familiar with the study, done under his division at Department of Wolfton Traffic Engineering Study.
Thank you. Jason?
Yeah, so about three years ago, former city engineer Randy Neal commissioned Wolfton Associates to perform a traffic study of the entire area. So they didn't look at Quander Road, or SNS Railroad Bed Road specifically, but they looked at the entire, what we call the capital cost for every district, which is from Torrey Russian down to Burke Haulter, over to Better's Mora Parkway, that whole area that's supposed to report development in the future. And so, in a synopsis of that, and this is a reading from the study right now, it says, upon various iterations, it will determine that approximately 35% of all parcels within the study area were constructed, then we could first start to see impacts. These first impacts would be on level of service on Quander Road at SNS Railroad Bed Road and at Brandon Street, and then it would take some significant high-density development to start pushing SNS Railroad Bed Road, there are some thresholds that require additional improvements. But I will say, and will add though, that given all of that, and making sure we're doing our due diligence to prepare for that, I give a report later on the T-Sonus proposal, so we'll have some items in there to cover, that cover these issues, so we're prepared for that when that topic is here.
Thank you.
But right now, as it stands, there should be significant impacts to the intersections or to the road bank capacity standpoint for this one development. Thank you.
Jason, you mentioned thresholds. What are those thresholds?
Um, so...
You talking certain amount of cars per day, certain amount of traffic?
Just generally, yeah, just generally speaking, the consultant was able to break that down in general terms for us and just look at, I'm sorry, this whole paragraph here, it says, upon various iterations, it was determined that approximately 35% of all parcels within the study area were constructed. Then Quander Road at Brandon Street would be the first intersection to have unacceptable level of service. If the improvements were made at Quander Road at Brandon Street, then the development will continue until approximately 50% of all parcels within the study area are constructed, at which time the intersection of Quander Road and SNS Railroad Bed Road would operate at an unacceptable level of service. Then the improvement could be made at the intersection, at that intersection, and development could continue until approximately 80% of all the parcels within the study area are constructed, at which time the intersection of Torrey Russian and Burke Haulter Road would operate at an unacceptable level of service. After the improvements that Torrey Russian Road and Burke Haulter Road are implemented, the development could continue until approximately 95% of all parcels within the study area were constructed, at which time the intersection of Quander and Burke Haulter would operate at an acceptable level of service. So the intersection, see the impacts first, and then it would take some significant higher density development along SNS to impact the roadways and capacity standpoint, which we're nowhere near there right now.
Thank you. And I would like to carry on through that, because we have that traffic study, so we do have the traffic study, albeit not exactly fit with this situation. Last meeting, we were introduced to the fact that there was an SNS railroad bed guideline, trail, greenway guidelines. Since we've had time to look at that, this particular application either way fits into the guidelines of those guidelines. It requires that crossings not be approximately recommended not being closer to 2,000 feet. This particular design crossing, already approved for crossfit, is within that guideline. I'd also like to point out that some of the things we've looked at with our committee already, is right here, I have a detailed engineering drawing for being ahead of the curve for traffic improvement to the greenway, and what this drawing renders is an improvement to the railroad bed from a divided two lane, one of which happens to be very close to the greenway, and vehicle traffic along there, if I'm walking, it's approaching behind me, that would bother me, so I'm concerned about that. So, one of my reasons for asking for this study, and it was done very fast, but it's done very well, would be to make that current lane as closest to the greenway at some point in the future, the bike lane, and within our 100-foot right-of-way, move the road that services that area onto that single lane that's away from the greenway, and make that a standard two-lane road. Now, to that two-lane road at both the entrance points, we can add speed tables, because to understand and to have observed cut-through traffic that's not of local origin, which is, to me, is a distraction of that neighborhood and that setting and the purpose of the greenway there. So, what I'm trying to say, until we can find an alternate route for the traffic, as the traffic study alluded to, and until we can make, we won't hold down on traffic just going through the public, cut-through convenience, I've even heard reports of logging trucks heading through. On a final note, I wanted to tell you that in consideration of this, I wanted Frank Neal, please Frank, go back over the conditions for the PUD.
So the conditions at the regularly scheduled meeting, well, I won't go back through all the meetings, but the staff, A, staff-approved bylaws and restricted covenants are to be recorded prior to construction commencement, B, staff approval of new landscape plan, C, five feet of additional landscape buffer along the property line of Buddy SNS Railroad Bed Road to create a 35-foot buffer, D, placement of three berms, 40 feet in length and 1 1/2 feet in height that are planted along the property line of Buddy SNS Railroad Bed Road, E, placement of two stop signs at the crossing of the SNS Greenway Trail facility and the site entrance located at SNS Railroad Bed Road to be paid for by the developer, and F, site plan to be revised for fee simple, actually, that's already been done, that F has already been done at previous meetings. So it will be a fee simple development.
Thank you. So folks, in some measure, what we have here is a very well-designed planned unit development, converting from what already exists to R8, R1,000. Now, those are, R8 and R1,000 are very small lots in comparison to what you normally would find in our county of R4,000, R2,500. So I want to think about that. We took all these things into consideration, we're going to have a community there, and we would prefer to have one with conditions, and so Frank, I'd like you were, I heard from you that the percentage of rental units, because there was some concern about the becoming rental units, what is the number percentage approximately in Statesboro city levels of rental units now? Of all residences?
Yes, sir. We're approaching the 80% renter occupied status.
Say that again, please.
Approaching 80% of renter occupied housing, so only about 20, just over 20%, is home owner occupied housing.
That's in the city levels?
City levels.
So, because that number's a little bit odd, maybe, because homeowners...
Yes, it is.
I want to make sure everyone understood that. So, the comments about this late become winter is in keeping with that number, if that impact happens. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Hold on, what's the motion?
Well, I'm going to make the motion to approve as requested.
Okay. Is there any discussion by council prior to a second?
Yeah, I need to ask a couple questions of Jason, that's right. Jason, that traffic study you mentioned, can you tell me the area of development that it, and the reason I ask is because we don't just have development right along Railroad Bed Road, right along Quander, if you go out Burke Haulter, out there by Five Points, clearly all that stuff between Quander Road and Brooklyn is all developing, so I'm just wondering how big a area they tested this traffic study, because there's a lot more traffic, I mean, I would say, I was surprised that Brandon Street was the first one that would have a problem, seems to me we're already having an issue in rushing in Brooklyn. I mean, heck, the Burke Haulter backs all the way up to 67.
Where the rental values is constructed?
Yeah, I'm just wondering what the area was of that traffic study.
It's from Better's Mora Parkway and probably the backside of Aspen Heights on the west side, Torrey Russian on the north side, and Burke Haulter on the east, southeast side. Just that whole quadrant in there.
So basically it only goes out to the Five Points, I guess?
Yes, that's right.
So all the stuff west of Five Points is not included in the traffic?
That's correct.
Or east, I was going to switch around.
Yeah, that's correct, that's correct, that's not included in the study.
Because there's quite a bit of development going on out there in the county.
Yes. Yeah, that's not included in the study. I'm sure, thanks to councilman's point about cut-through traffic, that would impact SNS Greenway, right, that that was not taken, fully taken into consideration for this, because there's so many other alternate routes that this, this direction could take.
Well, sure, but as, you know, the longer you have to wait at that intersection of Burke Haulter and 67, the more that's going to push people into the alternative route. And so, the more we develop out there until that, you know, right there where that new hotel is going, until we do something with that intersection, it's affecting that whole water.
Correct, which is currently accounted for.
And I would like to speak to that. I've recently received from the Department of Transportation, the paperwork for us, and they gave me the favorable nod, you reduction in public safety response time for the right-in, right-out, new exit off of that Sparkway application, so we're going to begin that process and seeking some relief which would absolutely reduce the Burke Haulter Road.
Except, except if you put that cut-in right there, you will definitely increase the traffic on South Railroad, because what now people do is they'll cut in, and they'll zig, and then they'll go right onto the bypass. So, I mean, that's not a bad idea, but that's, when you put that there, that's going to make that railroad bed road more attractive, which is going to attract more traffic.
And that's the reason I mentioned speed tables, to try to mitigate the traffic, cut-through, plus we've looked at all the routes, all the greenway at Midtown, we can't really speak to that, because everything we're talking about here is trying to catch up with this project. I came on in late June, and a lot of this was done, crossfit was done, so we're trying to catch up with that, and all I can do is produce things like a concept and these ideas that the public wants, and we'll just have to move forward with mitigating the traffic impact on the greenway as best we can. But we cannot condemn the land, there is going to be development on that particular flat. I happen to prefer the planned development where we have a good buffer with a berm that's going to really almost make it disappear, but once we do that crossfit, that's cool, we'll utilize them the same crossing, and the developer at their expense is going to provide the safety for the zoning application of that crossing. So, we're doing the maximum amount we can do, and you're playing. Mr. Mayor, would you, I know this, and I'll see some hands.
Yeah, I'll take your hand.
Please.
Any further discussion by council? Okay. I need one representative of those organized or part of the greenway to come up, you have three minutes to speak.
Okay. Okay. Keep going, man. First of all, my name is Robert Costa Viers, and I've been here a couple times before, and I'm going to be here a lot more in the future, okay? First of all, the traffic study is, seems to me, a bit of a problem. Three-year-old traffic study, is that right?
Correct.
Three-year-old traffic study. When is this, when is this land annexed by the city? Anybody know that?
13, July 13th.
So was this, was this parcel, was the greenway annexed by the city before the traffic study was done? It's April 2, it's April 2, 6th.
So the answer to that is no, the traffic study was after that.
Was after that, okay.
So Jason, was it on the greenway? The county owns the greenway, and the city doesn't?
Okay.
Just a fine point there.
Yeah, no, I get it, I get it. So, listen, so the traffic study is done three years ago, before Beacon Place was built, before the commercials rezoning on that parcel next to the new parcel Mr. Pierce wants to put in, which means none of this, none of this development was there, this traffic study does not take any of this into account, which is insane.
Well, that's not, that's not exactly right, because you do make assumptions, and assumptions that I've been told at the meeting...
that I've been told at the meet on this are at a higher density than was allowed out there. So they do, they do make assumptions before they just say, well, this is, there's, there's nothing out there.
Okay. Well, okay. The reality is, the traffic out there is crazy already, and just, I would ask you all to go there and witness it for yourselves at, at the times when, when people are moving, okay? Anyway, okay, traffic study, you all think is wonderful, I think it's not, I think we need, we need another traffic study. Um, for, for, and then, this, this, this whole issue of this property being done, this is sounding like a done deal. When we first met here a month ago, Mr. Pierce hadn't yet purchased the property, and it was all, was all, we're all hurrying along so that we could help him get the property in time, because he had to cut this deal. But now it all sounds like he owns the property and it's all happening anywhere. I'm a little confused about how all this is going on, if he still is waiting to buy the property. Now it sounds like he owns the property. All right, so off we go, that's another odd thing about this whole process. The density issue, you all talk about the density issue as not being an issue, it would be denser if there was an R eight or an R ten, but you know, there's, there's a, there's a lot of that land that Mr. Pierce is not going to be able to use, and when you take out the settling pond, and you take out the wetland, and you add the road, uh, as, as unusable space essentially, what you have is a crowded little environment, um, of lots of houses packed into very little space. And what is the average size of a lot that you, that you're proposing?
Sir?
What is the average size of the lot that you're proposing for these units? How much space?
The average size of a lot is around eight thousand feet.
Eight thousand square feet?
Close to it, yes.
Okay.
They're different sizes.
Hmm, what's the littlest one?
Without referring to the drawing, I do not give you an answer.
Okay. Who will take responsibility for the buffer? For maintaining the buffer, planting the buffer?
The HOA.
HOA.
The developer.
Hmm, but if all these properties become sold, who's responsible?
We will maintain ownership of at least the majority.
Of what?
Fifty-one percent, maybe a hundred percent.
And then how will those be occupied? How will the units be occupied if you own them?
Okay, uh, we've reached outside market.
Can I ask, can I just ask Mr. Pierce to answer that question?
Hopefully by, um, professionals.
They will be renting?
They will be renting.
Okay, so, so much for the owner occupied problem in this, in this city, which everyone agrees is a problem. This is not alleviating any of that, it's, it's exacerbating the rental problem. It's not, we're not having owner occupied houses. The whole thing is, is kind of a shell game, it seems to me. We're saying one thing, but we're not really providing owner occupied homes if Mr. Pierce maintains fifty percent of them and rents them out. Anyway, I think in, again, some, we're moving too fast, we don't have a plan, and we're basically walking into the dark on this, and, and I'm not quite sure what the hurry is and why this council wants to vote on this project, unless it already has and we just don't know that you have. And that's my sense right now. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Um, is there anyone who wants to speak? Anyone who wants to speak for?
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, we changed emails, but I resent some of your remarks, sir. You're implying wrong.
Councilman Do, we will not address, since we're sorry.
No, Mr. Mayor, but I just, there's some remarks I have.
Save all that for each other. Yeah. Um, uh, so we, we do have a motion, council have had any further, had that discussion, is there any further discussion?
Yes, I mean, now that the HOA has been brought up, can you clarify your statement? You're going to maintain fifty percent ownership on this property? I mean, we were understanding that this was going to be fee simple, you're going to sell all these off, but now you're going to, which means that the developer ends up holding the HOA, and that to me is a big concern, because we have issues when developers hold on the HOA and don't allow the homeowner percentage to get to a certain level, because then they just, we have other, we have.
Other than the developer?
Hold on, hold on, hold on. We have other, we have other residential subdivisions in this town with a developer, and the number of ownership has a recent threshold, so the developer holds onto the remaining property and then just lets it sit, or lets it rot, or lets it get overgrown, and so there is a concern if you're going to hold on.
Our biggest concern and the reason why we want to hold on and maintain the HOA is so we do not have a situation that you would have if we were to build all of these properties and sell all of these properties, you would have a hundred and sixteen different owners in this HOA.
Right.
So the HOA cannot be controlled, you cannot control the, um.
The owners.
You cannot, if you maintain, if we maintain fifty percent, which we plan on maintaining as much as possible, then we control the HOA. In other words, you, in other words, we tell you what your grass is going to look like.
I understand.
So, so that is our main reason for, for wanting to control the, the HOA.
Do you have the HOA documents, Chris?
We have to have them in effect before we break ground. And a good example is.
Would we approve the staff?
That was C, right?
Yes. And that's standard.
And we're set, I have looked at and studied Beacon Hills HOA, and it is a good platform, and there's some good points in, in maintaining the development.
And, and I'm not accusing you of any, so, but just, just so you know, but we have, the HOAs are, are, are some of the concerns, some of the issues that we're having.
We would want to address those issues.
I mean, there's, there's, I mean, look at Park Place, look at some of the other, the HOAs are having problems, and both ways. Sometimes it's the developer owns and they don't do anything, and sometimes you just get absentee owners and, and the HOA becomes a bump, but that, those, that type of organization is struggling here.
Council, and our, our thoughts on that is if we maintain the property, then we can keep the property at our standards.
I, I didn't say that.
Any, any further discussion by council?
Um, yeah, you know, I, I think the one thing with the greenway, Derek, your councilman Do, and all due respect, that we just, no one seems to talk about, is the, the crossing over, we have a crossover at Quan, we now have a crossover at the CrossFit, uh, and the way the greenway is laid out, they'll end up with one, two, three more crossovers if all that property is sold, so that's like five traffic crossovers within a what? I don't know, mile, mile or quarter, something like that, which, I mean, then that becomes like a city sidewalk, that's no longer a greenway, that's a. And so, this is the concern they have, and I don't think we've addressed it. I mean, traffic is one thing, there's plenty of traffic along the Atlanta Beltway, but it's separated from the pedestrian traffic, so, okay. And I think that's what their concern is, that it's not someone's at the traffic, but you have all these roads crossing over, and honestly, if you end up putting a bike lane there, you end up with a situation where you, you may end up with a worse situation for now. Now you have a wider area to cross through, which means that you have a visibility problem. Um, I, I don't know who's on the task force or what the task force is designed to do if that didn't get brought up here, but honestly, I, I think we've got some money set aside in sploths for public parks. I know the county's got some money set aside, we relieved the burden on some, uh, transportation by passing the T-spots for both the city and the county. I, I honestly think we need to get with the county and sit down and look away to, and I've talked with Frank, and I don't know if we can do it, Frank said, with, you got some money? Yeah, Frank's doing a MRM.
Just need the money, you're doing it.
So, yeah, we, we can get a lot of things done, feasibility studies, be damned, if you got ten million bucks, there's a lot of things you can do. Um, not saying we have ten million dollars. We don't even have a one-hundredth of that, was quite frank. So my, my, my recommendation would be, is instead of rushing forward and, and, is, is sitting down with county, seeing if we can't come up with a plan and see if we can't, even if we had to put a, a high price tag on Frank, and it costs, whatever it costs, half a million bucks, see if we can't do something to redirect that trail, so that way, one, we can allow this development to happen, two, we can allow future development to happen without having to go through this every single time, and three, to create a greenway that separates cars from pedestrians, and that, by doing that, we will create a park that has long-lasting value. And I think that will benefit not, not only the developers, it will benefit the city and it will benefit the council. So that's, that's my suggestion is that we don't rush into this book, because I'll be honest with you, at this point with the amount of crossovers, I'm inclined to vote in.
And I do, Mr. Mayor, can I respond? Phil, those are all good points, I want everybody to understand that this developer has the right to start today at R eight, R ten.
Is he on the property?
I own the property, and I can start today.
Okay.
This, this, well, excuse me, this was just an idea that I was giving to our task force to, to do what you just asked, they, they had their first meeting Friday.
What is that?
This is a.
So far it's been staff, so far it's been staff, it was Frank, Jason, myself, Brad Neal, Tom Couch, Mike Rollins, and Andy Wobbs. To go back and look at the stuff that the county did nine years ago, to look at the traffic study that actually Brad, when he was here, was a part of, so he understands the traffic study and how it applied, and what area it is. So that's his meeting to take, to take a look at how we go forward from, from here. And I think, that's fine.
Oh, no, no, I'm still okay.
Excuse me.
I'm sorry that hasn't been that long on our plate lately, as you know, and the information pool about that meeting hasn't caught up, that was the reason I was attempting to give an overview of considerations facing us this morning, to either allow this putt or to default to the R eight, one, R ten, you know, they can go right away, they own the property. I prefer the putt, where we have conditions, we have some control of the homeowners association rules, I think Frank just alluded, that's part of the conditions, so I don't want the misunderstandings that we are some type of, uh, against the greenway, or against what stood for Bullock County and what stood for State of Georgia, that is not it at all. In a wonderful world, the greenway would be there by itself, perhaps, some people may complain, we don't want to be out that far out of town alone, that was one of the considerations, we're not trying to reroute the greenway behind this, we're talking about that. Safety, liability, the greenway is what it is to the trailhead between Gentile and the trailhead now, with all that comes with it. Ideally, if we allow this to go forward, we can find a way to take traffic off the greenway between the trailhead and Quan Road, but I cannot do that for this meeting, I cannot even make a proposal for that, due to restrictions in intent, and we have to be careful in what we say and do here. What I am trying to say is give it a moment where we have a decision, and not making a decision is a decision this morning. I was proposed made a motion to adopt the putt as is presented to us.
All right, we have a motion, is there any further council conversation? Okay?
All right, with that.
Yeah, I'd like to make one comment, the fact that, I understand, I hear the concerns of the residents and also the developer, and they're all valid concerns, however, I have to agree with Mr. Do, the fact that the developers can, can make a move right now as a, as an R eight, however, it appears they are working with the residents, may not be a perfect situation, and, and they've made the years, there's nothing, unfortunately, they're perfect, but I pray and hope that they continue to work with the residents so that everything worked in harmony, and the fact that they plan to make the, take one of the highways and make it a five-way, yes, going the right way, and it keeps the greenway, yes it is, but improved, in a sense they are trying, whatever, and I'm sure they will continue to do it, pivot it up.
All right, we have a motion, we've had discussion, is there a second?
Certainly.
All right, all of them favor?
Uh.
All of those oppose?
Nay.
All right, let's show that it's a three to one passage of line item ten. All right, I will move to agenda item, uh, ten, which is consideration of motion to approve, I mean, eleven, consideration of motion to approve. The town of Chandler, we need to look at the amount of one hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars, three hundred dollars for the city hall and Avery Center for Arts to approve this situation project, funded in writing of twenty thirteen, it's a lot of support and trust.
So a few months ago, the city hired a roofing consultant, line and associates, to study the aging roofs at city hall and Avery Dollar Center. Consultant determined that a roof coating system would extend the roof life by ten years and would be the most cost-effective solution. The city solicited, from that recommendation, city solicited bids, sealed bids, uh, and, um, the local contractor, Chan, a local contractor, Chandler Roofing, was the low bidder. Chandler Roofing meets the requirements for bid package, submitted an acceptable bid bond, and I say after the end we're in this contract, Chandler Roofing, the amount of one hundred and twenty-six thousand, three hundred dollars. Take any questions, Jim?
Any discussion by council?
Yeah, what kind of warranty? Is it a flat roofing?
Uh, more or less yes.
I mean, slight slope, but representative of flat roof, what's the warranty, you know?
That's a great question, um, I'm not sure what's on that here. Ten years.
Ten years.
Ten years.
Just a flat roof and a standard.
Thanks, Dave.
So the warranty's five.
So, all of them favor? All right, let's show agenda item, excuse me, eleven, pass, we move down to agenda item twelve, which is discussion, consideration of motion to approve, the organization will proceed in manifest office, um, Glenn, if you'll give us some insight on that?
As you know, Robert Cheshire resigned in August, and since that time, we've taken a look at how we can make the office work without having him here, and for me, the best way is to go to two assistants who have been going, it's just a single deputy, and the way that would be broken out is one of the assistants would, would have planning, central services, inspection, management of buildings, and one of the TAD districts that we've created, uh, the other oversee public works, utilities, T-spots, and one of the other TAD districts, and the city manager would continue to have fire, police, HR, and finance, and, uh, I don't know what the budget impact will be, because it will depend on who applies, if internal or external, and who we end up with, but I do think that this will, with, with all the activity we have, I think having two will be, will, will serve us well, we have a lot of projects, and the TADs, and the T-spots, and those kind of things, and the comp plan, everything that's going on, I think this will be a pretty good way to give out those, those areas. And so, if you go forward with this, we would get the ad out yet this week for department heads, the ads go out for fifteen days, and in fifteen days, I'll take a load of applications and, so hopefully within, so five to six weeks, we'll, we'll make it happen, we'll make sure that seems like a reasonable time, six weeks, we should be able to get through everything.
Yep.
If I answered any questions, tell about the way they're.
Is there any discussion by council?
Yes, Mayor. I certainly appreciate what you're putting forth as an option, and, you know, I respect as a staff person, you come to staff, and it's like letting you all handle this, this endeavor, but I would like to know what is your impact, how it possible, I understand that that, you know, that's not necessarily, it's capable at this time to, to a full degree, but.
So if we, so, so, so let's say we had, we get two from the outside, and you figure, let's just figure a hundred, so that'd be, yeah, so that'd be two hundred thousand, if they're internal and we're raising salaries up by.
Now, that's minus Robert's salary, two hundred minus Robert's.
Yeah, so right, so right.
So you're only talking about an additional eight, you're going to.
Correct, yeah, and so if it was internal, then depending on whatever salaries are, it would be that, that difference there, so it could be, I don't know, fifty, sixty to two hundred, so there could be actually kind of like, uh, almost savings if it, if it So it could be actually kind of like almost savings if it goes out. So it just, it just kind of depends on, on who actually applies and who isn't. But as far as having the real number, Robert was probably thinking about a hundred and let's say fourteen or sixteen, something like that. And so that's, that's kind of what we... None of that answers. But that's kind of what we're... Kind of what we're...
The question I have is, I mean, Robert was here, he was like acting city manager for a long time. How long was it, two years?
Twenty-six months.
Twenty-six months, he had an engineer acting as city manager. I think he did a good job. So my concern is having a city manager and then two assistants as a manager, who will take much. Not only that, we talked about having the impact, you know, the inside person move up, because I think it would be great out there to have a good staff, or excellent associate or assistant manager. That person's job has to be replaced, so there's still the two hundred thousand impact goes here, but that doesn't really change. That person has to be replaced.
You can't refuse one of them. Those are, those are...
I understand.
And if you were to ask Robert about his twenty-six months, he would say he wishes he would have had one or two other people to help him. I can guarantee you that, without a doubt.
Yeah, I'm sure they helped us good, but I think the department heads would have a good, and all of them have ten-plus years, the senior department heads. So if you're getting about, if you're getting about the fact we have the department heads who can handle the department, I don't believe that. And another thing, I like the fact that we talked about earlier, having a special senior, this person specializing in T-Spots or TAD. I think that'd be an excellent idea, a great personal board who could just focus on the T-Spots or the TAD as a specialized in that, and then a temporary position. We had a person take care of that four years, five years, and move to another level, deep conversation. This is my, this is what we are discussing this, this is my discussion.
Any further discussion by council?
Yeah, I just wanted to throw out there, Randy, I think this is a, is a good idea. Sam, you're absolutely right. We do have great department heads who are overworked. You know, we've been needing some additional help at that level for quite some time, and then with Robert leaving and with Jeff leaving. And, I mean, we're, the department heads, I mean, including the people who've taken over for the department heads are, they're overworked, they could use some help. So if you can take Robert's salary and roll it into this, and it's, you know, even if it costs a little bit extra, you know, the bottom line is we're at eighty-four percent employment, or we're down thirty, thirty-two employees right now. We can use some extra hands. So if, Randy, this looks like a great idea, and you know another thing too, is that should... No, not saying anything's happening to you, and hopefully your doctor gives you a clean bill of health, which has something to happen to you now we have, we have a succession of land in place too. So right now, I mean, we don't, so that, that's a good thing.
Randy, let me ask you this, you obviously, we have considerable amount of projects on the docket if you will. How complex do you feel this change will allow us to move on aggressively or efficiently toward what we're getting those things done?
I think it puts us in a, in a good spot where we can, where people can really start to focus on that, where it isn't just one person, you have officials projects, and now we'll have, we'll have two others who can make sure those, those are for, some of those are going to be pretty complex, the T-Spots, just moving that along, even though, even if we have somebody else, that's, that's a lot to keep track of and make sure. Frank is working on the COM Plan, but he's got two, two young guys at his office, so we need to be able to spread some of this so we can, we can get out there so we're moving everything kind of at a constant speed. So we work really hard this week on this one, and then we work really hard on the next week, and then we're pulling back. So I think this will give us an opportunity to have a little bit of better range where we can, we can keep things moving.
I don't know, I'm, I'm a little bit concerned, and let me tell you what my concern is. My concern is that we're going to have, when you're adding benefits, we're going to have four hundred thousand dollars plus tied into three positions. Meanwhile, we've got eight people cutting the grass for the city of Statesboro. And we've got neighborhoods where we've got the grass as tall as the stop sign. That's what I'm concerned with. So this, to me, this looks a little too tall, heavy. And I think that, you know, we can, I think we really may need to kind of look at exactly how can we more efficiently levy the resources we have to more efficiently service the city. And I know that this is, this is a lot of money, and I mean, and the guys that's out cutting the grass, they're not making anywhere near this. And I know that we could, I mean, that's the service that I know that we can provide, and I'm just using that as an example. So with that being said, is there a motion by council?
I'll move to approve the review of organization, please.
Okay, is there a...
I mean, with the idea that, Randy, you know, once you decide who you're going to put in place, you'll, you know, there's, there's some other, there's city engineering, there's a T-Spots manager, I mean, there's other things, so the structure, the structure needs to change. I mean, more importantly, is getting good people that work for the city. So I'm, I'll move to approve.
Is there a second or any further discussion prior to the second?
I'd like to just see this table this for the time being. You already backed the questions, I guess, I can't do that now.
Well, just continue, he's made a motion, we can now continue discussion after the motion. If there is one second to the motion, then we can entertain another.
A second.
Okay. All right, all of them ready?
All right.
Okay. All of them opposed?
Yes.
All right.
I'm going to go there.
Okay.
Go to the group.
Okay, all right, three to one. All right, we'll move down to agenda item thirteen, discussion regarding processation schedule for T-Spots projects. Mr. Williams?
That's amazing.
Okay. We're going to have to get my agenda set for still an answer.
My answer, yep.
So we've been talking T-Spots for a while. I don't know if you must, I'm trying to get our, our projects prioritized, and now we're moving forward with trying to establish a schedule for those priorities. At the August seventh, twenty eighteen, city council meeting, former deputy city manager Robert Cheshire presented a project prioritization list for your consideration of approval. That list identified funding twelve transportation categories and itemized projects in each of those categories. Since that time, city staff has developed this spreadsheet that's in a packet and is up on the screen, which identifies the projects in each of those categories in the fiscal year in which the project will either be designed or constructed and completed. This distribution is consistent with the anticipated annual receipt of funds for the T-Spots intergovernmental agreement tier-one projects. And so if you want to, we can...
So what I wanted to do is bring this forward, as we said, and we have a little bit more refined it at, at this point. Staff has gone through, refined it, and we'll see a lot of versions where the, you know, planning stages first year, the projects we will be able to accomplish this first year, and then we'll look into year two and three, which will probably be ones that we can actually get constructed. What we would like to do is for you all to take, take a good look at this, and then we would like to have a word session where we'll cover two or three items, but this would definitely be one of the items that we would really like you to take a look at and make sure this is the direction you want us to go, and then staff can get the consultants showing, and we're here to provide it for you and so on. Yeah, which is what we mentioned before, we just had this, we just had this at a, at a stage now where we were pretty confident that that can work, but there might be other projects that are on that list that you would rather do than the ones that we have there. That's, that's the point right now, where if there's other things you want us to do, we don't need to start shifting the money to your act. Even though we got a lot of money, these buildings, you know, where we've spent, we've spent a little bit, so what, just, that's, that's what we're looking for.
Yeah, this schedule will spread everything out, just a few years to make sure we're proceeding well.
And I want to include, the ones you've highlighted, all the ones that you suggested that we addressed, other ones of priority, I would say.
Well, if you look at the top of that sheet, you've got a color code legend, so everything that's highlighted in yellow, we did it this way just to make sure you understood that we weren't actually completing that project that fiscal year.
Yeah.
So this fiscal year, currently in this year, twenty nineteen, we plan on spending seven hundred seventy-two thousand dollars proposing, seven hundred seventy-two resurfacing, and everything in yellow this fiscal year you see is design. So we're going to put some proposals out to consultants here very shortly to get some design work going. And it's mostly designed this fiscal year, as well as defraying costs to the general fund for the purchase of the dump truck, which there's a quick category for that. So it's mostly projects this year. But next year, we hit the ground running pretty hard, and we have a million and a half dollars proposed in projects in addition to the seven hundred seventy-two thousand resurfacing, as well as some additional, long set aside, another million dollars for the South Main railroad intersection improvements, we're working with G-Dot right now, trying to coordinate that, trying to put as much burden and financial responsibility down to take care of that, but there will need some assistance with the property acquisition and the like.
You know, candidly, you know, well, candidly speaking, I went through these projects, and I think staff have actually done a great job kind of, you know, prioritizing, kind of spreading out, you know, that way. It looks like it has a little balance growth as far as, as far as the entire city is concerned. So I do like, I do like that you guys, you know, were very intentional in doing that. I personally don't have a problem with those proposals here, but I think that once we get in that workstation, we can kind of, you know, talk through with a real fine truth on what was, what was presented, and then you guys have done a good job on that.
Thanks. Jason, I think that's a good one.
Yeah, good job, Jason.
And Jason, some of these projects, some of these projects finally have numbers where they've just been CIPs for a certain ten or fifteen years, right?
Yeah, I mean...
I mean, they've been on there, but blank line the whole way across.
Yeah, that's one of the unfortunate things with Robert Lehman, that he finally, we finally had the funding for the projects that he started back in early nineties, that we'll just have to carry those through and make this happen, make this a reality.
Well, let's hope he's off his chair.
It was.
Okay. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Is there any other business I said, council? All right.
Wayne? Yep. We had planned to have Davenport here on October sixteenth, but Frank has alerted us to, he has, he's anticipating eighteen items, planning items, so that means we go a little...
Thanks, Frank.
In fact, you save up months of that and put it all on one.
Where did all of that over from?
So what we'd like to do, if it, if it works for you guys, is to, and we visit with Davenport, they can, they can be here on Tuesday, October thirtieth, probably in the morning or afternoon, whichever works better. And at that time, we could also bring the T-Spots back for discussion at that time too, do a little extra work. And we may have another item that can go on at that same time. So sometime on the thirtieth, works for all of you, morning, evening, afternoon, we'll get with Davenport and set that up. If your calendars are written down, we...
I'm good.
I'm good on that day.
Preferably.
Cosmo, Chalice, Cosmo Floyd?
I think so, yeah.
Tuesday, if anything...
That would be my preference.
Yes, morning would be good.
Are you guys, like, early morning, you think about like seven? Six? Just have a draw.
Yeah. There's Dorsey, remember, makes a cut.
So we're thinking seven? Want to start at seven, seven thirty? Is that what you got?
Seven thirty.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, but you guys doesn't count our appointment, or should we do it?
We'll send something out. But for now, we're going to plan for seven thirty on the thirtieth. And we won't have the afternoon meeting on the sixteenth.
This is a work session.
It'll be work, but we could have an item that, that they can go around as well, so it'll probably just be a work meeting.
All right.
Yeah. More than one.
Is that it?
That's, yeah.
Hey, Randy, by Mason's, Allen's, I'm here. They just announced that, yesterday, the Dog Park opening on this Saturday.
This Saturday?
Yeah, they just kind of put that out there, so for Dal and Allen, if you guys haven't got that yet, Dog Park this Saturday at eleven, eleven. You gonna have your guys out there, Jason? I know your guys have done a lot of work on it, so...
Yeah, I've seen it.
And Robert too, yeah. So be there.
Thanks for the reminder. Are there any public comments?
Mr. Mayor, I wanted to ask Chief, I wanted to come forward and talk about the email he sent to us. I want the city of Statesboro to be aware of what he distributed us. Chief? Sorry to catch you by surprise, but I want to just speak to your crime statistics, please.
Yes, sir, Mayor, that's, I believe. So I just sent an email to all of you read, and just for public disclosure, I don't like to look at crime statistics in short bursts of time, because the data is so small that, that, you know, an incident or two can make a big difference statistically. But I do think that it was important to let you all know that we've seen some pretty significant reductions, you know, on a percentage basis of gun-related crime over the last ninety four months. So through the end of August, I think robberies with guns are down about fifty-five percent, I think, or about forty, forty-two percent if it was, and forty-two, yeah, maybe you have the nerves or, or you want, but, and I think the aggravated assault with a firearm was down about fifty-five percent, was that the one? So overall, violent crime over those compared to just a year ago now, so, you know, really I like to look at crime stats over about a decade, so you can really see trends happening. But it is good news, and I worry that we get inundated with, you know, social media commentary and, you know, local news that, that really like to discuss crime-related things, because they're exciting and they're interesting and people need to know. But I want to make sure we don't get beat down with that information that somehow it's all bad news all the time. We made a concerted effort to address gun crimes specifically, and I hope that there's some payback in that, that we're seeing these reductions for a reason and not just through the luck of statistics. But I just want to let you all know that there is good news statistically, that crime across the board throughout the city of Statesboro is down.
Thank you, Chief.
Chief, if you don't, just real quick, just from a raw number sample, eleven robberies, twenty-two overall robberies, I mean assaults are six over any month period, so I mean, the numbers are, the raw numbers are pretty dang low. And the reason I bring that up is that I think you said to me at one point, I said that the likelihood of Statesboro being involved in a random crime is pretty small. Most of the time, if you're to be involved in a crime, it's somebody you're related to. I mean, is that, is that a basic, general, broad statement?
Yes, sir, and I think I've been very public about this in a number of forums, and I think including in front of this body, that, that the people who are closest to you are the people most likely to harm you. We know this nationwide, it's not something I'm just, you know, making up for Statesboro. When you allow people close to you, those people have enough emotion towards you that they might want to hurt you, right? That line between love and hate. You don't have relationships with someone, the chances of them victimizing you as part of a violent crime are incredibly rare. And that's true, not just in Statesboro, but, you know, countywide, statewide, and across the nation. So we all need to be careful about our associations. Now, when I talk about relationships, I'm not just talking about domestic violence kind of situation. You know, if you're a gang member, you hang out with other gang members, that's a relationship, right? If you are buying or selling drugs, that's a relationship you have with the buyer or seller. And those are the folks typically that are involved in violent crime. Does it happen on occasion? It does. I know of two instances over the last, you know, eighteen months where we've had innocent victims victimized in violent crime, but two instances in eighteen months is pretty small against statistically, but a huge deal to the people involved in that. And so I don't want to, I don't want to make it a small for people involved in those instances, but generally speaking, I think that you can walk from one side of town to the other without any fear of being hugged at most any time of the day.
All right, any public comments? All right, saying that if none, is that we forced to go into, is that a concession? Saying that it's not, is that consideration of a motion to withdraw? Is there a second? Sir, all of them ready? All right, now, where they sit?
Sorry, your fist went back there. Sorry, you're going backwards.